got indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Changes, additions, deletions, the proposed agenda for this evening. Okay. Roll call?
President Schneider.
Present.
President Protem Dyke.
Present.
Councilmember Alec.
Present.
Councilmember Colka.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman. Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Steffler.
Present.
Feldman did text and say he's on vacation and will not be in attendance tonight.
I saw the, um, village managers' report on our tables this evening. Oh, managers informing us what's going on. Um, I'm not going to let this pass without some notice. Indicating that the closing for the sale of the movie theater in the medical building, it's going to close next week. Yesterday, that the purchaser apparently has never been informed of the fact that I have a 10-year lease in that building. And, um, the seller went, oh, I forgot, apparently, even though we gave it to him three years ago or so. And the purchaser apparently is not aware of that fact and, um, it's going to cause a problem and very well could end up in litigation. But it's certainly, it's not fair to the purchaser to not know that fact, especially since seller's saying purchaser tends to tear on both buildings. That'll, if that's the case, that definitely will end up in litigation. So, somebody ought to let the purchaser know. Be nice.
Wasn't aware of one building that might...
Yeah, that's...
...modeling plans for the structure that you reside in.
That was what I'd, um, heard uptell yesterday when seller directly contacted my staff and said, "lease? What lease?" Hmm, the one we gave you three years ago? So, it's fun as usual. Okay, communications, I don't think there's anything else. Moving on to... Consent agenda, regular meeting minutes for July 5.
President Schneider, actually, I have a correction on the minute. It's actually the motion for the closed session. The reasoning behind the closed session to consult with its attorney regarding settlement strategy was not the motion that was made. It should be to consult with the village attorney regarding a written legal opinion. So, as long as President Protem Dyke, who made the motion, and Councilmember Colka is okay with that change.
Yes.
I will make that change.
Yes.
I'll get the basis for the closed session. Yeah, I saw that. Know what I said? So, okay, um, anybody else with corrections coming into discussion regarding the regular meeting minutes for July 5? General Fund. Main Streets, Local Streets, Parks and Recreation Fund, Downtown Development Authority Fund, Tour Fund, Water Fund, Equipment Fund. Skipping over various funds, so seeing after Equipment Fund, the police and sheriffs and one or two, that's still under...
That's the department under that fund, oh, yes.
Water Report. Water Report. DPW Report. Wastewater Treatment Plant Report. Ordinance Report. Ordinance Enforcement Officer Report. Building Permit Report. Some...
Support.
Support by Councilmember Steffler to approve the content agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections unanimously approved by all council members in attendance. Oh, I'm sorry. Now's the time for public comment for any issue on our regular agenda. Any public comment this evening? Yes, now. So, regular agenda and versus concrete update for the salt shed, right?
Um, yes. Um, I'm certainly not against concrete. It's just a lot more money. The availability of concrete is not as easy as the asphalt is. And in your packet, you should see pictures, not sure which where it's at. I thought there was pictures of the City of Lapeers Salt Building. Yes, there it is on the back of the first page. That is pretty much like what I meant to present to you guys in the last meeting that I was not here. They recently used asphalt. It is a cheaper material. It does not last as long as concrete does. But if you remember when we were like, uh, talking about the building, the building is portable and we're not sure if we're, we're not sure how long we're going to be down in that area. I mean, it's possible we could be down there forever or we may end up moving. And I, I just, my personal opinion is not to spend the extra money on the concrete unless we have more of a solid idea if we're staying in that area. The other picture, if you look, you can see where, you'll see those bins. We have our sand gravel in, um, coal patch right there. So, we are currently, there is currently asphalt there that we are driving on. That, that is actually all asphalt back there. Again, it's not the best material, but for the price of it, I think that it's best to go with the asphalt. And also, the amount of square feet of, we're actually doing more. The asphalt contractor came in, goes, "I'd rather fix all of this around," you know, it's, it's another almost 700 square feet of, of, uh, area. So, I mean, again, I'm not against doing concrete. If you guys want to, I, I'll most certainly do it. I don't think I can get a concrete contractor to do it this year. Clear Heights did not order the building because they want to know if they are the ones that are going to do the concrete. And they want to know, we have to have some money down and it would be based on if they were doing the concrete or if they won't.
Asphalt, they would do the concrete for the base, right?
I'm sorry.
If we go with asphalt for the flooring, they would do the base concrete for the building, right?
No, we're, we're either doing all concrete or all asphalt.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, it, I can get, well, I said this last year too. I don't want, want you to hold it to me, but I'm pretty sure I can get asphalt done by November of this year through Ultimate Asphalt. And I would like to get the building ordered and I'm going to be pushing Clear Heights to get the building set up this year. Whether that'll happen or not, I don't know. But they can't set the building until we have a good foundation. So, again, I'm, I'm not against either one, but we're just going to spend more on the concrete.
The building's still going to have the cinder, the cement blocks to hold it down, correct?
Correct. Six-foot high, Jim.
So, are, is that something that you're, you and the DPW are going to stack and they come in and build it or is that part of the building?
They stack it, they set the building. The only thing we have to decide on is if we're going to have Clear Heights do concrete. Another reason I'm, we budgeted $65,000, it's going to be 71. I'm already over budget if I use the concrete. Already two weeks into my budget year. But we need to decide if they're doing it or if they're not. I just felt I could save some money by having our, one of my asphalt contractors do the asphalt and then they come in and set the building up. Once that, that's all they got to do. So, they have to order it, the materials and stuff like that.
Is there any ceiling that needs to be done on that annually?
Not on the asphalt, but if we use concrete, yes. The road commission, I actually, uh, I actually took David before this. The road commission actually uses asphalt. Now, their pad outside is concrete where they load the trucks. But if you look at the City of Lapeers, there's asphalt. It's just a preference thing. So, because of the availability of asphalt and it's easier to get asphalt than it is concrete, concrete is actually going up. I don't, it's going up bad right now.
$10 a square foot.
Yeah. And asphalt is going to go up in August. I don't know when. I did get a flyer, it's going up $9 per ton. So, I would like to lock something in, so...
What's the thickness of the concrete compared to asphalt?
The asphalt was going to be like three and a half and the concrete was going to be four. So, it's kind of the same. There is one area where the back of the building's going that needs to be excavated out and they have to put a base coat in there so that they can get the three and a half inches on that part. Probably where the block, the back row of the blocks are going though. So, but yeah, I mean, if you can kind of look at this one picture where the, the yellow, the asphalt, you see there, it doesn't look like it's much more room, but it's almost seven or 800 square feet. I'd have to look at the other number there real quick because it's, it's, it's pretty tore up back there because that's where we're driving our loaders and stuff now.
So, that's going to give you a better drivable surface for larger area?
If we had, if we had probably, you know, 15 trucks or like the road commission that we're driving on it and loading trucks, I would totally be here asking for concrete. You know what I mean? Because that's, we have two trucks and every time it snows, they load up once. It's not, it's more of a storage area. And then like this time of year, we're not even, we, we might drive in front of the barn, but we're not, you know.
Brian, what you said about the portability of the building makes sense to me that we might not want to invest a significant amount if we're eventually going to move that.
And like my quote a couple of weeks ago, I am sorry I wasn't here, I was on vacation that week. But, uh, I did try to get another quote from like Toby just to kind of see. I was feeling him out because when I heard it was like $25,000 for concrete, I was shocked. I mean, it's gone up a lot. I mean, our, I think our normal, I think we actually budgeted 15,000 for concrete and under normal circumstances, it probably would have been 15,000, but it's gone up quite a bit.
The last three months, it's doubled.
Yeah.
Because my original quote on the house was $5 a square foot. And it's at 10.
Ultimate Asphalt, they've actually done work for the DDA. I worked with them. They patched some of our roads. I'm looking forward to trying to use them a little bit more as well to kind of have a backup. He doesn't do roadwork right now, but doesn't mean he's not going to if he gets a little bigger. So, I am, I'm obviously pushing my contractors, but it's hard because we only got two months left of the construction season, three months, you know? So...
Contemplation of the potential to move, uh, DPW elsewhere. Any locations in mind?
The only ones we can really come up with is the industrial park and that's, might not happen, yeah.
Certainly not.
Yeah.
But at some point also, there might be a whole reconfiguration down there of the buildings at some point. And if, and if we have to move the shed somewhere else, spending another 25,000 in concrete.
And I, I mean, we, I really hate sitting here telling you guys we're, we need a new building. Someday you're going to. I mean, it might not be in my career, you can keep going away, but...
Need a new building.
It's, we're taking over the park just with our personal vehicles. And then when we start getting our work vehicles out, it looks like there's, you know, music in the park going on, you know? But, and then, you know, I mean, we have to move stuff out to get stuff out. We don't put it back in because it won't fit in that spot or something like that, you know? But we, I, I think if we play our cards right, we could put a bigger building down there. But then if, you know, you go somewhere else, it's better to just do one great big building or something. I mean, right now I have two buildings, so, you know, and they're not energy efficient. So, my electric bills are high, my gas bills are high, you know? About the time you get one of the, you know, garages warmed up, you open the door and it, so...
Speaking of the industrial park, if I can just chime in on that, I had the chance to speak with Greg Dennis today and he is tentatively holding the lot next to the water tower in reserve, knowing that we have expressed some potential interest in possibly building it out that way. And, um, he shared with me that they just had an appraisal done on a building in Emily City that was 17,000 square feet and ended up appraising at $101 a square foot and that included everything, building, land, et cetera. So, um, you know, he, you know, he's approximating that if, uh, and I'm not sure what square footage we might need, but I said, if we had a 12,000 square foot building, you know, what would the, you know, total package be? And he said, probably around one and a quarter million, you know, 100 bucks a square foot, 101, 105. So, um, he's going to be, uh, developing the lot next to the one by the water tower. And he'll be coming to the planning commission in September for his site plan for that.
We've spent 1.1 on the equalization tanks. They're paid off 20 years, 25 years later and it's done.
You guys have spent $2 million in the last 10 years on equipment for me and...
Kind of like a...
And it's sitting out in the sun baking all summer.
Yeah. I'm really concerned about that machine out there. We have to find a place for it this winter, you know? I mean, not even somewhat the winter, but by summer, you know?
As I say, the, the, the sun, I think, is worse than...
It's the wor, the sun dries out the tires, yeah.
All the hydraulics.
Yeah, yep.
But that's the nice thing about this salt shed too. I mean, coming into summer, you're almost empty.
Yeah.
You know, until you start getting it this time of year where you're going to start ordering. I mean, to buy us another year or two...
Yes.
To get to that, you know, one point...
Yes.
You know, put some, you know, call it 1-5 because you know there's going to be overages.
I would hate to try to build a building for 200,000 for storage when we go and, and going to get a different building down the road. The, the main thing is the, the equipment. It's, it, they're investments and you guys know how much money you've spent. I, I mean, I'm very proud that we can provide the services that we do, but we need to take care of the equipment as well, you know?
Slightly different, um, move, moving perspective on the issue of weatherization being exposed. Since, if you watch TV a little bit, the planet is on fire. Exposure to heat appears like it's going to be going up substantially. So, that puts your equipment in even, hmm, it's a greater hazard, shall we say, more weatherization. So, it becomes an even bigger issue.
Your storage thing for the winter, like you were saying, you need to check with Ian. Maybe we could snag a spot at the fairgrounds in one of the buildings. I mean, they don't do a whole lot up there in the winter.
Oh.
And I know they do rent storage spots though.
Okay.
Space, that's for sure.
Did you happen to see the beer town up there when you went to Emily City?
I was at Josh's wedding up there.
That's the same company that did this.
That's a nice outfit.
Yeah. I mean, ours is much smaller, but it's the same thing. It seems to be what everybody's going with and it beats our $150,000 quote we got last year for a pole-style building, a wood building. So...
Question on this issue?
I'll make the motion that we approve the quote from Ultimate Asphalt for installation for the salt shed in the amount of $11,000.
Motion made by Councilmember Steffler, supported by President Protem Dyke to approve the, um, bid for asphalt for the salt shed. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections unanimously approved by all council members in attendance. That does wrap up our regular agenda for this evening. And now, there's, it's time for public comment for any non-agenda items. Any public comment for non-agenda? Being none. Open discussion.
Mr. President, I wanted to give you folks a brief update on the Community Heart and Soul, which I've also put to paper as well in my written report to you folks. But I did have the chance to attend the core team meeting with Armada last week. They do have an established core team of five volunteers and they're moving along and they've got some support coming in from Community Heart and Soul. We're one of the representatives from headquarters is coming in to meet with them at the end of the month for a project exercise discussion. And then they have a proposed meeting via Zoom with a panel of representatives from Community Heart and Soul. That's basically just a rubber stamp where they go through an interview. And after that interview, Orton Foundation provides the $10,000 seed money for their efforts. And Kathy Dickens has been a regular attendee of their core team meetings and she has, and that organization has pledged to match that $10,000. And they would do something similar as well for us if we decide to implement the program here. So, they are moving down the road. Their core team seems to be pretty excited and committed and they're, they're looking forward to implementing the heart and soul. And based on the feedback I received from meeting with the DDA, uh, the Parks Board, feedback from Supervisor Bowman, uh, the initial feedback from our own planning commission, uh, I think there's enough genuine interest that, uh, I would like to, uh, go forward and, uh, get a resolution of support from this council and the township board next month. Because we've got seven people now that without really doing any campaigning or arm-twisting have graciously said, uh, they support the program, they want to be involved.
Much more encouraging than anticipated earlier on regarding this project. So, it does appear to have, um, the community and volunteer support that was, that is needed. Sounds like a real plus, yeah, to bring it on.
And to do that at the second meeting in August.
What's on that issue? Okay. Since we're finishing early, when we do our, um, comment time and then it would appear that we may very well be going into closed session. So, why don't we go around the horn? Manager Trent, anything that you wish to bring to council?
Two other quick items I'd like to share with you. We've been, um, having, uh, a number of heating and cooling companies that have been visiting our wastewater treatment plant examining the, the system there. And, uh, we finally were, we were able to get the, the original installer of the system to come out and do an investigation. And they discovered that the damper that is tucked away inside a duct that you need to crawl up a ladder to get access to was closed and broken. And they jerry-rigged something and they were able to prove that the system does work and does cool. And, uh, they came out and did some additional work yesterday. They braised the heating coil. They said that that was a simple repair to get that system going in the short term. And so, for a very modest investment versus the, uh, large number of dollars that were being thrown around by some of the vendors that came out. We've got air conditioning during the hottest week of the year coming up and we will have a heating system that will function when we need it later in the year when it gets cold. So, at least for the time being, I think we're comfortable with the repair that's been done at a very modest cost that gives us a little bit of flexibility to use some of those budgeted dollars for more important, uh, issues that our wastewater treatment plant needs to invest in. Uh, I've also been working with, uh, an individual who's a property owner in our village that has had a blight issue for a number of years. And that issue has been, uh, improved dramatically in the last two weeks. And I'm actually meeting with that individual tomorrow to continue the dialogue and see if we can make it a gem in our community instead of, uh, the blight that it has been for the last few years, so...
Thank you. Kim, anything to bring to council?
Uh, just a reminder, the next council meeting is going to be on Wednesday, August 3rd because of the election. So, don't forget to vote.
Amy? Time. Tim?
Yeah, I just had a, a resident question and I couldn't remember what the answer was to this, the issue of Jake breaking along 53, whether or not that's something that the village can control or only M53. I know we've talked about it before.
The state has control of it because it's a highway.
That's what I...
We can't do a local ordinance. We, we, you might have, you might have been meeting, you were on vacation.
Probably.
We talked to Andy about it because I had, I had another resident ask me the same thing.
Okay.
53 has, 53 has control of, of the ordinances along that strip and we can't make a local ordinance on it, is my understanding.
That's what I thought, but I, I just wanted to...
MDOT told me it would not ever pass through them because it's a state highway that is also a main truck route.
So, the truckers wouldn't like it? I don't know why wouldn't they do it?
They consider it a, they, they'd say, because the Jake brake is all part of the, the braking mechanism on the truck. Do, everybody have to do it? No. It's mainly when you're loaded heavy.
Okay.
It saves you on the brakes. My personal opinion is half of the trucks that leave at 7:00 in the morning that rumble the windows downtown are empty and those guys just like to hear the echo when it's nice and quiet. I say that from experience because when you can get them to rumble and you get a nice echo, it does ring nice in your ear.
You sort of get addicted to that?
It's kind of like a Harley with loud pipes.
Gotcha.
But the MDOT said that it would be something that would be a fight uphill battle that would most likely get turned down when it hit the federal level.
Yeah, who, who starts the inquiry? That's my, I was curious about that.
I would say the state, I would go to a state rep to get high enough to make a chance to get to speak to somebody, but... State, I would go to a state rep to get high enough to make a chance to get to speak to somebody, but our downfall in this town is the big curve by the car wash.
Right, yeah, and that's my second thing I wanted to ask about. Just as I was sitting at the light waiting to turn, gravel hauler just blew through the red light. I mean, it would have taken out myself and my daughter as we're sitting in the car. But I knew to not turn until you wait, right? And I was just wondering if our where we ended up with the portable units, the miles per hour units, where those are at now and if we decided we were able to use them on M53? I might have missed this at the last meeting.
I don't know where they're at.
I haven't seen them in a long time.
Scott settlement.
But one's been on West St. Clair.
And the county has one also on Glover Road right now, so there's three in the area.
On 53?
I thought it had to be permanent.
Well, we do have a permit to do that, so the chief can employ it on M53, but it has to be moved around periodically and.
Yeah, can we ask to get that put in the rotation? Because it's just out of control blowing through that red light.
I was crossing at the former bank location two days ago. I paused as I was on my bike, I paused and dude rolled through the red light without even slowing down.
Yeah, but yeah, another resident mentioned that, that they hit the light and it's red, but people just blow it.
Always pause 30 seconds before crossing.
With the trucks, once they get if it's green and they're coming into it, and I know a lot of them are doing over the 30, but even at 30 mile an hour, if they hit speedy queue and they're heading north and they're still at 30 and they've committed to that green light and it turns after that point, they have to go. They're not stopping loaded.
The speed is the real issue.
Right, but at that point you commit like if if I'm going through town and I'm at speedy queue and I know I can't stop, now I'm dropping a gear and getting into it. And by the time I hit the light, I'm going to be at 40 mile an hour because there's no way I'm stopping. Now I'm trying to get through it. That's where you're getting a lot of that. I bet if they do a time study on it, coming into the that climbing the hill by the river, you're going to see guys slowing down. And at the top of that hill, when they see it just turn green, they're committing and they're committing too early. You know, my big thing on the radar signs is is they can't they can't put them, in my opinion, or they need to recalibrate it right at the speed limit change. Because like when it was on St. Clair, they're coming into out from out, you know, you're in the you're doing the speed limit coming into town and you're a third of a mile away and the lights are triggered. Move it in another block so that way you give them a chance to slow down before you're twirling red lights.
I noticed that too. I was like, well, no, no, I'm not doing anything wrong. But yeah, I think it would be good to get it on the rotation on M53.
Really, that was the chief.
Thank you. And that's all I had.
My only question is, how is Kingsbrook doing?
I'm sorry, I'm not going to let it lie.
Yeah, I asked for you about a month ago.
Huh?
I asked for you about a month ago and it means you were not here, just for you.
I have not checked it recently, but I know they were making their $15,000 a month payments.
Last time I checked, which was about a month ago, they they were current in keeping up with things.
That's all I had.
Seth?
David, are we hearing any more? I'm getting occasional inquiries about this as to any potential occupant buyer for the PNC site?
What I've been told, and it's just hearsay from some of the former employees, is that corporate has it up for sale and that there was a multitude of interest from banking institutions, restaurateurs, even a veterinary facility. And and I don't know if it's actually up for bid, but that's what I've been told and that maybe the deadline for bids is coming up in the very near future, so. But, you know, nobody's come knocking on my door asking about, you know, any potential rezoning issues or things of that nature, so.
There's interest.
I would anticipate that. We'll see somebody moving in there once the sale's consummated, so.
Just to bring to council, do we have a motion?
Consult with the village attorney regarding a written legal opinion.
Or.
By President Proton Dyke, supported by Councilmember Steffler. We do have to vote, don't we? Kim, we do have to vote?
Yes. Dyke? Glasser? Steffler? Aye. Alec?
Aye.
Holka?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye. Unanimously approved to go into closed session by those council members.